Welcome and thank you to the October 3 meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Donald Psychowski.
Present.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Chester Oglewitz.
Present.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here.
Before we go to the approval of minutes, I'm going to break with tradition on the agenda tonight for those here. We're going to take the new business items that are on the bottom and our individuals who would normally report on those are going to be doing those, like Council Hagan will be doing it under his communications elected official. Council McCoy will be doing his part on the correspondence. Council Winnie will be doing her part under her committee report. This is just to try out, see if we can't make things a little more efficient. That said, could I hear a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting?
I'm moved.
Second.
Have a motion on table to approve minutes of the previous meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions?
I wasn't here.
One abstention. Thank you. That said, at this point, I'd like to enter into the public speak time. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the city council or address the city council on issue currently not on its public hearing agenda, please step forward and state your name and address for record, please.
Burns.
No, she's been something else.
Something else?
Hi. I'm Burns Maxey, the ECA Plus coordinator, and I came here a year ago to say hello and introduce myself and invite you to an event that we're hosting called Art Hampton. And we are hosting that yet again this weekend, October 6th, on Saturday, and we have morning workshops, and then we have open studios where you can visit artist studios throughout all of East Hampton. And we have a number of restaurants that are participating, that are offering discounts from Riff's to Glory of India, and we have a whole list of restaurants that have decided to join us in this event. So it starts at 9:00 in the morning on Saturday and ends at 6:00. So 9:00 at East Works and then 12:30, there'll be open studios throughout the day. So I hope you'll join us, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to step forward and address the city council on any issue currently not on our public hearing agenda? Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Eric Snyder, I'm the director at the Greater East Hampton Chamber of Commerce. And just a couple of little notes. After everyone has a good time at Art Hampton, the chamber would like to invite you to attend our third annual casino night, which will be at One Cottage Street, starting at 6:00 PM on Saturday evening. Also, I'd like to invite those that would be interested that we have a monthly networking by night, which is a meet and greet, and we have them both in East Hampton and South Hampton locations. And this coming Thursday, on the 10th, we're pleased to be at the new Cooley Dickinson Hospital Rehab and Outpatient Clinic, actually just over the line in the Big Y Plaza in Southampton, as Cooley Dickinson is our local community hospital. They invite you to come and check out their new facility and what they have to offer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to step forward and address the city council? I know it goes without question, but please state your name and address for record.
John Mason, Parks and Recreation Director for the city of East Hampton here. I think you guys all have in your packets this evening our second annual Pumpkin Fest, which is going to be in the park on October 27th. Last year, we just did a carving and then a lightest pumpkin walk in the park, and then did treats and prizes and things like this. This year, we're looking to do an all-day event. We're going to be providing inflatables, kids' games, face painting, food, bands, all kinds of things for the city residents. There's going to be no fee for getting into the park that day. Most of these things are free events for the community, so I want to have you guys, invite you guys to stop down. We remind people that are doing the carving to bring their own pumpkin for the contest for that. Last year, a lot of people assumed that we would provide the pumpkins as well, and at the prices that they charge these days, we can't afford that. So we'd like people to bring their own pumpkins. Is there anybody with questions regarding that event?
Any questions for the speaker?
Is it true, rumor, there's also going to be a dog show?
There is going to be a dog show. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, there's going to be the Yappy Valley Community Dog Show will be in the park from noon to 2:00 that day as well. So we've got a lot of great activities and things going on that day. It should be, hopefully the weather cooperates, and it should be a great event for the community.
Okay. Council Psychowski.
I want to congratulate you and the Park and Rec Commission for having an event like this, because we've sadly lacking in this community for years. I realize this is the second year, but I never acknowledged it last year, and I'm sorry, but I want to acknowledge it this year.
Thank you. Yeah, we're looking to, you know, keep expanding and keep adding events and try to make it bigger and better every year. You know, the 2/25th celebration was an inspiration for this, you know. It was so great to see everybody come to the park. A lot of people haven't been to the park in years and, you know, see what it's all about, so to get people to enjoy it for free, spend a day in the park, you know, something we're all about at the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward?
I just want to have some copies, extra copies of the flyers that were on the table if anybody's interested.
Thank you. There'll be extra flyers on the table if anybody would like them on their way out. Please state your name and address for record, please.
Melissa Swazki, Finance Director, 9th North Green Street, East Hampton. I actually just came up this time because I have sent an email earlier today, or yesterday, I can't remember, but you have a new agenda item for classification hearing on the tax rate, and I was just going to request that you set the public hearing for that this month, just because I'd like to move that along with all the extra moving parts with the tax rate this year.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to come before the council to speak and address us on anything other than what's on the public hearing agenda tonight? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. I'll hand this part over to Council Hagan.
There's two items on communications that involve the finance. The first one, the Finance Director just got up, so we might as well deal with that. It's a request from Mark DeMuro, Principal Assessor, subject tax classification. He's looking for, it states, "The Board of Assessors would like to schedule a date for the tax classification purposes for fiscal year 2013." That said, I would make two motions. The first motion, I'm making the form motion that this tax classification item be sent to Finance.
Second. Do we have a motion on the table to send this item to Finance for review and consideration? Is there any comment on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions?
And the second half of the motion is I'd like to set a public hearing on this for our next meeting in October, which would be October 17th at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second. We have a motion on the table to set a public hearing on this item for 10/17, 6:15 in these chambers. Is there any comment on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Objections or abstentions? Motion passes.
Our second correspondence item involves the little item here in front of us who's keeping a watchful eye on the proceedings tonight, Stuart Bear, and it's a letter from the East Hampton Savings Bank that was forwarded to the mayor and then forwarded on to the council. I'll read the letter. "East Hampton Savings Bank was a successful bidder for the Stuart Bear at the recent East Hampton City Arts and Bear Fest auction. On behalf of all of us at East Hampton Savings Bank, we would like to donate this bear to the city to be placed at 50 Pace and Avenue. The value of the contribution is $1,000. Reflecting on Stuart's many years of service to all of us in East Hampton, it seems only fitting that the bear created in his honor should find its home in a place he called home for so many years. We hope you and all those who work in and visit the municipal building enjoy the bear. As another reminder, the success of the Bear Fest project conducted by the city, excuse me, by East Hampton City Arts Plus. Sincerely, William S. Hogan Jr., President and CEO of East Hampton Savings Bank."
Thank you.
As part of that, I'd make the following motion pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Approval is hereby given for the acceptance of the following gift of services to the city of East Hampton. The donation of Stuart Bear from the Bear Fest Auction donated by East Hampton Savings Bank executed this 25th day of September 2012. Michael A. Tausnick, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion on the table for gift acceptance for the Stuart Bear as previously mentioned. Are there any comments on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or objections? None? Motion passes. Is that good? Yes. Okay. Council McCoy, your Parks and Rec guy took the wind out of your sails.
Yeah, he did. But as I, the second, Council Psychowski, they do an outstanding job. He did forget one thing, though, which I will jump on. Not to forget, the Rag Shack Parade will be October 24th, starting at the Maple Street School at 6:30. The rain date for that great fun parade is on the 10/25, so the next date. So just note of our Rag Shack Parade. I would like to go to another business that we do every kind of election. We need to accept a warrant for the upcoming election, so I'm going to make this in form of a motion. It's kind of just informative, and then we can accept, as a council, accepting a warrant of this election. So in the form of a motion, the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the city of East Hampton, qualified to vote and stated elected to meet at their respective polling places in said city on Tuesday, 6th day of November 2012, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for the following purposes. Election of President and Vice President, Senator in Congress, Representative in Congress, Governor's Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, Clerk of Courts, Register of Deeds, and Register of Probate. There will also be three statewide ballot questions and one local ballot question. Your polling places will be precincts one, will be Whitebrook Middle School for Precincts 1, 2, and 5, and East Hampton High School for Precincts 3 and 4. And also, last day, to register to vote is October 17th, so remember that as well. But I said that in a form of motion to accept that warrant.
Second. We have a motion on the table to accept the election warrant for November 6th?
November 6th.
November 6th. Any comment on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? What on warrant? Passes.
And then to finish up before, I just, City Clerk reminded me, the absentee ballots are also available, so if it's something you need, you can get them from our City Clerk. End of my report.
Thank you. That said, we still have a little bit of time. Reports of standing committees, rules, and government relations. Council Rist?
Thank you. We have the request for the establishment of the cultural district on our public hearings. Last night, we met for the second time on a very important subject, Chapter 32B, Sections 21 to 23, which is the acceptance of the new health insurance law. We were almost finished with our discussions, and I'd like to personally thank Representative Cybek, who came for two meetings, driving from Boston each night, and last night in difficult weather, and he was very valuable to enlighten all of us on the discussion. We also recorded the meeting last night, so if any councils who could not attend wish to see it, it's on the website under, I think, cable TV, East Hampton Cable TV. I would like to also announce that we're going to have our final meeting on October 16th at 6:00 PM, Conference Room 1, on this agenda item. And I would also like to set in the form of a motion, a public hearing on November 7th for the acceptance of Chapter 32B, Section 21 to 23 in these chambers.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for the aforementioned item concerning Chapter 32B, Sections 21, 23, for 11, 7, 12, 6:15 in these chambers. Any further comment on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None? Motion passes.
That concludes.
Thank you. I seem to be remiss in this way too much, and I apologize to Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's actually nothing on your agenda, but I did want to put another pitch in for the Yappy Valley Dog Show on the 27th, primarily because I'll be emceeing the dog show.
There you go.
And this is my second appearance, so it's a callback. I think it might be a future career, I'm really not sure. But it's going to be a great time. The park will be full of people, and it'll be, it really will be a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Okay. That said, we're at that time. I'll entertain a motion to enter a public hearing. Second. We have a motion on the table to enter the public hearing. Any comment on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
No objections or abstentions? Okay. Council Rist?
Thank you. We have before us the request from the ECA to establish a cultural district in East Hampton. The Rules Committee met and passed 3 to 0 affirming the creation of this district. A couple of notes. First, it is primarily a marketing tool for tourism, listing us as a cultural district. It includes many cultural entities, not just arts, but businesses and restaurants, and there's a list of them in the nice handout that were given to us. What's another important item, and I handed out Planner Allen's comments to me regarding this, and that is that this cultural district does not in any way create any kind of new zone, is not a zone change, there's no overlay district, and does not in any way change our zoning laws restricting businesses in this district to being somehow related to this district. It does not change any business from coming in to be built in this zone. It has nothing to do with that. And she made that clear. And there's also a comment at the end of this, in the FAQs, "It's not intended," I quote, "not intended to override local regulations or future projects." That's very important, because it's one of my questions. There is no budgetary impact, except for $200 for two signs, which I assume would be taken care of by CA for the signs, $100 apiece. There is five, the committee also was happy to see that after five years, we need to review this, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we need to adopt it again, or we can get out of it if for some reason we've decided that this entity is causing us grief in some way, but I don't see that. There is a restricted geography, and I'd like to invite Ms. Maxey to tell us why the geography was restricted this year to the district it was. I forgot what that was, if you wouldn't mind telling us about that.
Would you mind, please, stepping forward the podium?
Do you understand my question?
So, I'm sorry, this is Kristin Angela co-facilitator of ECA Plus, and I can speak on behalf of ECA Plus, but she has also prepared just an introduction to what the walkable location is. So if you mind addressing counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristin Angel. The question has been asked why we should apply to have a cultural district in East Hampton. If you could please imagine a place where you can explore shops, go gallery hopping, then have lunch at an outdoor café, perhaps pick up tickets for a show, see local artists at work in their studio lofts, or stop and listen to a local jazz trio, all this in a compact, walkable neighborhood. That's the idea behind Massachusetts' new cultural districts. In the case of East Hampton, our walkable district could include more than 100 cultural assets all along a route that is less than 3/4 of a mile long. More than 100 additional cultural assets are located in close proximity to the proposed route, which includes Cottage Street, the southeast end of Pace and Ave, Railroad Street, the northern end of Union Street, and a short section of Main Street over to Old Town Hall. A thriving creative sector is one of our most powerful economic assets. Having a designated cultural district in our city will garner further support from the MCC, including statewide and national marketing opportunities. There are MCC programs for developing cultural economic development strategies, artist live workspace, and cultural facilities planning and construction. There are mapping resources available, as well as educational opportunities from other communities in the Commonwealth and around the country. Having a cultural district also opens the door for potential funding and grant opportunities in the future. Statewide recognition for the designation and online profiles on the state's Office of Travel and Tourism and MCC websites are additional perks. A cultural district encourages citywide partnerships and self-defined assets to further promote tourism. No cultural assets will be blocked from participating, and all will benefit. All cultural assets are encouraged to partner with us on this project. Partners will become part of the project management team, guiding the growth and development of the cultural district. All of these benefits come at a minimal cost, as mentioned, roughly $200 for two signs that say that our city contains a cultural district. The cultural district will have absolutely no impact on zoning in the areas through which it runs.
Are there any questions?
Could you answer the question as to why the geography was limited to what I think we?
Yes.
There was some question of why East Works wasn't included, and I just wanted to bring that to them, and I didn't write that down.
That's all right. I can answer that question. It's a great question, and it's one that we were surprised by the answer from the Massachusetts Cultural Council. We had proposed a route that went all the way over to East Works and then doubled back down the bike path to include the park and the Hatch Shell. However, the Massachusetts Cultural Council is looking for a path that is not only walkable, but also jam-packed full of cultural assets. And unfortunately, right now, in between Old Town Hall and East Works, there's a residential area that doesn't have any cultural assets on it. That's not something that is insurmountable. We could certainly work together, the project management team could work together to try and come up with something that we could put along that route in order to fill that gap, and then we would be able to extend the route to include the Mills.
And I'd also like to include that the Manhan Rail Trail was also a considering factor of a way to get to East Works. Obviously, it's a great way to get to and from the Mills. However, it's not walkable in the snow currently. We don't plow, so they didn't deem it as a walkable destination point. And also, the Mills, we are inviting them to become partners, and they can be listed on the map, so they can actually be present on the map. They just won't be in the cultural district currently. As we expand, we can absorb them as being part of the cultural district. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Before you step down, is anybody here in the council that has any questions?
I have one quick question. And, I mean, we could take it up later with the committee, but going through your packet, and certainly I am supportive of it, you had an example of a sign in Pittsfield, and it seemed to me, I assume, reading the signage, we kind of have to get the sign from the state or they, so it's going to be pretty standard, but they seem to have a name here, Pittsfield's Upstreet, and do we have a name for our, I'm not sure what Pittsfield, I mean, I've been to Pittsfield several times, nice city, but I wondered if we had a name for our district or if there's something that is going to be included. I mean, obviously, there's enough artists here that have the talent to design the sign. If you have the ability to do that, I don't know if you do or don't, so.
I haven't heard any specifics about who chooses the name. I imagine that we would be able to do that, and.
We would. We would be able to choose the name. And we selected, if you see in the packet, it's the Center Cultural District, and the reason why was because we actually also have the opportunity to apply for a separate cultural district if we wanted to, for Pleasant Street, so we could have two cultural districts, which is highly plausible as I think Pleasant Street develops and could become potentially its own cultural district. However, we can change that name as the partnership comes together and decides on that. It could be just the East Hampton Cultural District, and we could keep it very simple, which I don't think is a bad idea necessarily.
Okay. Any other questions for these?
I have one.
Okay.
Do you foresee going in the future, any need to come to the city and requesting a budget for $10,000, $20,000 per year for marketing and staff and so forth, or is this all volunteer?
This is all volunteer-based, and in fact, the hope is that we will be able to get state funds when they become available, so that we won't be coming back to the city to ask for money.
They've really prefaced the fact that there are no funds available yet.
Yes.
And the implication there is that it is probable that there will be funds in the future for getting this cultural designation.
From the state.
From the state.
Council Psychowski, please stand.
I have a question. Could you explain to me how the cultural council, or whatever this commission is going to be, is going to draw tourism to this community? What do we have that I don't know about?
That's.
Michael will bail you out.
That's a good question. I guess I can answer from my point of view, which is that I am aware that this city is full of talent and full of culture and full of wonderful people who are working very hard to both improve arts education and improve life for artists in the city, in addition to coming together as a community to celebrate the culture in our lives.
Mayor Tausnick, would you like to step forward and answer that question?
I don't want to interrupt the presentation.
Okay. Please.
I do have this FAQ that I'd like to pass up, this is in your package, and anybody who is here.
I don't remember.
We still have another one? You still have the floor?
We need two more.
Need two more?
Here. These two. These two. These two guys.
Thank you. Still have the floor? Anything else you want to add to your debate or discussion?
No.
We'll open it up to the public. We'll open it up to the public in a minute.
Well, you've heard from the volunteer leadership and staff, this, just so you know, I'm absolutely supportive of this, I'll sign it tomorrow morning if you approve it, and we'll move it forward. It is the natural progression of where we're going with the community, and as you know, we've been focused on the arts for years. I'm really sorry you don't know the arts that are happening in East Hampton, Councilor. Bear Fest itself brought thousands of people into East Hampton. We have galleries and shops that bring people in. We have semi-annual activities right across the street at One Cottage Street. Twice a year, there's a huge show. There are nationally, internationally known artists in East Hampton that display their wares in our buildings, and anyone, including the residents in East Hampton, and any resident, any person who wants to come can go to these shows. We draw an amazing number of people for such a community, and we're just starting to break through that. You know, I believe, that we've applied for grants for a boardwalk here along the pond. That is going to be a combination of efforts. It's going to be a recreational facility. There'll be operations there by the Park and Rec Department. You just gave them great praise for introducing new activities. That's going to draw people. But there's also an opportunity for permanent public art displays along that. We had 41 bears all around town, plus another 50 small bears. They brought in well over $50,000 at auction last, two weeks ago. I'm proud to have one of those bears in my front yard. That's all monies that are going back into the arts, either as commissions to the artists or as funds that are going to support art in schools and our cultural initiatives. There's no downside to this request at all, and it really is the next step moving forward. We need to generate a draw. We have been doing that. East Hampton is a great place to go for lots of resources. It's only going to get better. This is going to give us better visibility, potentially funding, although there's no funding in the pipeline at the moment, and I don't really mind if in a few years, the need to support the cultural assets in the community turns into a budget request, because that is going to turn into improvements in property values all over the community. It's, you know, thinking about this, it's, oh, it's going to cost something, is really not, probably not something that we need to worry about, because it's going to bring in a lot more resources, even if someday down the road, a mayor in the future comes to you and says, geez, we've got this cultural resource, and we'd like to do some marketing because it's bringing in tourists and it's adding to the property values in the community, and it's supporting the businesses in downtown. And what downtowns do you see that are bustling as this one? This downtown is doing tremendous resurgence of both popularity amongst people who are buying and interest by business owners, because we have cultural assets here, because we attract people, we attract monies from outside of the area. It's a wonderful place to be, a wonderful place to do business, and to be quite honest, this is a no-brainer, in my opinion. And I don't mean to be pejorative, and I know that it's your decision, but this should be a very easy decision to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this issue? Please step forward. Yes, I know no introduction is needed, but.
Do I have to do it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Once again, Eric Snyder, Executive Director of the Greater East Hampton Chamber of Commerce. It's the chamber. Those designations hopefully will bring more tourists, will bring more business, and help, in general, vibrant business means a healthy community, and that's what we're looking for the most. And the artists and craftspeople in the community deserve this, because they've worked very hard over the years to establish themselves, and this is just another, to echo, it's another step in the progression of the, the great cultural explosion that's happened in the city over the last 10 years. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to step forward and address the council on this issue? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Size number 23.
Hi, I'm Fletcher Smith, Dragon Circle. I'm an artist that works at Paragon. My, let's say, I think we should do this. However, I think ignoring a million square feet of artist lofts, studios, schools, and music by not being a primary source of this cultural district, I think, is not giving us a full advantage of the marketing tools that this would lend, you know, East Works, Paragon, Mill 150, 142, as well as, I'll say, pouring some money probably at Ferry Street. I think that the walking tour could probably be ameliorated by plowing maybe the bike path. I mean, it seems like a small thing, but I think it'd be, help us as, as an individual, and also, we do participate in art walks and other things, and we do generate sales. We want to generate more sales. We put out money, we expect money to come back to us. I mean, it's, it's pretty easy. We, our main draw so far has been, let's say, food and art, but we'd like to do music as well. So, I just request that that might be considered as part of the, you know, this building process.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council on this issue? Seeing none, Counselor Riz.
Okay, just want to answer that before I set the motion. The state designated the geography for this cultural district, I think the commission asked for it, and they came up with, I think, these rules about walking, and I believe with the strength of people like you, sir, and other artists in East Works and Paragon, et cetera, with enough dialogue, the district will be expanded quite soon, because I think it's ridiculous. And I also concur, we ought to plow the, if we could afford it, I don't know if we could afford it, but plow the, plowing the bike path wouldn't be a bad idea. That said, I will read, if I can find it, the resolution that I'm supposed to read. I move that the council create a cultural district by virtue of the following resolution, a resolution by the City of East Hampton to create a state-authorized cultural district for at least five years to be named the East Hampton Center Cultural District, whereas the city town, the city wishes to pursue a state-authorized cultural district through the enabling legislation, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 10, Section 58A. Whereas the city has a mixed-use geographical area that has a concentration of cultural facilities and assets, whereas the city or town has held a public hearing and adopted a resolution proclaiming its interest in establishing a state-designated cultural district, whereas the city has created a broad and diverse partnership of stakeholders committed to cultural community and economic development to provide oversight of the district, whereas the Massachusetts Cultural Council will be petitioned in accordance with its guidelines and criteria to designate said cultural district. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of East Hampton, that the city endorses in Article I, endorses the submission of this application and agrees to foster the development of a cultural district, and Article II, endorses the state-sponsored cultural district goals, attracting artists and cultural enterprises, encouraging business and job development, establishing tourist destinations, preserving and reusing historic buildings, enhancing property values, and fostering local cultural development. In Article III, will appoint a city official to represent the city within the district partnership of said cultural district. In Article IV, encourages all who own property or businesses in East Hampton to involve themselves and participate in the full development of the cultural district. And in Article V, directs city agencies to identify programs and services that could support and enhance the development of the cultural district, and ensure that those programs and services are acceptable to the cultural district, to be signed by the President of the City Council. That was a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to accept, and basically to adopt the aforementioned resolution. Are there any further questions on this resolution? Counselor Riz?
I have one final comment. When I moved here in 1979, I was told East Hampton was a bedroom community, and that had some benefits when you're raising children. Thirty-three years later, I think East Hampton is wide awake with this kind of culture, and I am enthusiastic that will now be called a destination community in competition with North Hampton. We're a walking community, and this just adds to it, and I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counselor Higgins?
Just a quick comment, I don't want to be redundant, it's already been said, certainly I support it, and I did want to say, for the last gentleman down in Paragon, I think if what I got from the committee members is, they're certainly supportive of if at some point we could expand the district, and hopefully everyone would be on board to do that also, so I just wanted to comment to that.
Okay, any other counselors? Counselor Derby?
My only comments were actually to echo the gentleman, and I think this is a great win for East Hampton, whether it's a secondary district, or whether it's part of the central district, I think that it's crucial that we look at getting Pleasant Street and Ferry Street. I think really looking at that Ferry Street building, the potential for redevelopment there, this could be that catalyst potentially. So, I think that that's something that we really need to look at, so I would encourage you to go further.
Okay, I will state this myself during the Rules Subcommittee, I did take on a role and ask some very hard questions on cost, impact, and escape plan, in case this doesn't work out the way we want to. I was completely satisfied with the answers and fully support this, and I'll ask one more round of comments before I take a vote on the motion. Are there any other counselors who would like to speak to this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the three mayoral appointments be moved to Appointment Subcommittee for our next meeting on October 17th, 5:45 in Council Chambers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to move the new three mayoral appointments for a public hearing on October 17th at 6:15 in these chambers. Is there any further comment on this motion? Counselor Winnie?
No, it's, it's actually, I'm, I'm going to be holding the review for Appointment Subcommittee on October 17th at 5:45. We don't need a public hearing for the three appointments.
Okay. My mistake, thank you. Okay, with that clarification, any further comment on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any objections or abstentions?
That's it for my committee report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ordnance Subcommittee met on Tuesday, the 25th of September, with the Planning Board, and we talked about changing the zoning ordinance, Section 11.12, and so at this time, I'd like to set a public hearing, so the full council can hear it.
We got the recommendation from the planning board.
It's okay, we know what the recommendation is. They voted on it.
They have to send it, though.
They haven't sent it yet.
Wow.
They'll send it by, I imagine.
We can continue the public hearing.
We can continue it if they haven't. So, I'd like to set the public hearing for 10:17 at 6:15 in these chambers.
Okay, we have a motion on the, do we have a motion on the table? Again?
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion on the table to set the public hearing of the aforementioned item for 10:17, 12:00, 6:15 in these chambers. Any further comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No objections or abstentions? Counselor Derby, you still have the floor?
We also met as a Subcommittee after, we adjourned with the Planning Board and talked about the over-quota liquor license from Riff, and, Riff's Joint and Popcorn Noir, and I would also like to set a public hearing for 10:17 at 6:15 to look at the over-quota liquor license from Riff's Joint and Popcorn Noir.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for the over-quota liquor license for Riff's Joint and Popcorn Noir for 10:17, 12:00 at 6:15 in these chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Okay, Counselor Derby, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, we did discuss the keeping of chickens, but we are not ready to move on that one yet, so I would like to ask for a 30-day extension on that item, on our agenda.
Second.
Okay, that was in the form of a motion, obviously, so we have a motion on the table to extend the request concerning the keeping of chickens for 30 days. Any further comment on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or abstentions? None. Counselor Derby, you still have the floor?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Psikowski?
No report this evening, sir.
Thank you very much. That said, since we have addressed the issues before us under new business already, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion on the table to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.